All right. Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. I'm going to call the May 28th meeting of the Granby Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we'll go through commission check-in and seating of alternates. My name is Mark Lockman, the commission chair, and starting from my right.
Eric Lukingbeal, member.
Christine Shinney, member.
Eric Myers, vice chair.
Paula Johnson, alternate.
Steve Muller, member. We'll be seating Paula Johnson tonight. Commissioner Labatt and Shanghe are not here. Maggie said was not available. Okay, next on the agenda is item four, public session. Is there any items not on the agenda or subject to a public hearing that anyone would like to speak to us about on planning zoning matter? Anyone on Zoom? Steve Marty? I don't see any public sessions. We'll close public session. Next, item number five, action on the minutes of May the 14th. Didn't see anything that I saw needed. Shanghe, any comments?
I thought they looked good.
Looked good. Okay, take the motion then.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
We have one abstention. Otherwise, minutes carried. Next, we have public hearings. Do we still need to switch Abby?
Yeah.
Okay. We'd like to make an agenda correction if we could move item A down to item C. Switch those two without objection, is that all right?
No objections.
Okay, thank you. So we will start then with our public hearing. Will be our first one will be listed down as B, which is now A, is application seeking a special permit for a garage in excess of 600 square feet on Granville Road. Vice Chair Myers, could you read the call to the hearing, please?
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P and Z on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15th North Granby Road. To hear and consider the following item. Application seeking a special permit under zoning regulations section 8.1.3.3 for a garage in excess of 600 square feet within 100 feet of the street line for property located at 133 Granville Road, R2A Zone, file Z-10-24. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file on the Community Development Office.
The applicant and representative here. Just introduce yourself and your address, please.
We're Craig and Sue Cody. We live at 133 Granville Road, North Granby, Connecticut. We've lived there 38 years, and we finally decided we really need to build a garage because we're just getting to it to rub all that snow off.
We have the information. Just for record, maybe explain what you're doing, where you're putting it, how it's going to look.
Okay, because of how the land is this way.
It's got a hill.
It's got a hill.
Right through the house.
Right. So to in order to keep it back from state line and get it all squished in the right spot, we're going to be digging into the hill to push the garage back past the property line where it's legal because it's if we do it, it can't be too close. So we're going to excavate that area and put the garage in back there.
It's not on our feet, it's 50 feet. Or 500 feet, sorry. Wait, why am I saying 50 feet?
No, zoning regulations 8.133 require special permit approval for accessory buildings that are over 600 square feet and within 100 square feet. But this one is actually 720 square feet total.
It's large.
Garage will be located 55 feet from the front property line. Therefore, special permit approval is required.
So it's 55 feet.
Behind the house.
And we have a...
They have to tip.
Yeah, we have it. You know what I mean? If we did it on our feet, it'd be in the neighbor's yard, up in the back, you know? I don't think our sideboard line is that long. Yes.
Sideboard line is...
I see you say you're going to have some small downward facing lights on it.
Yeah, just for like downward facing, just enough to where it could start so you can see where it's going. No way to spotlight or anything like that.
Abby, anything from staff?
Yes, we just wanted to clarify the dimensions. It's 30 feet by 24 feet?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And it came to 120 or 720.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Who's up wrong? Yes, and then on the...
No other questions?
It's still two car. Any questions from the commission to ask? Nothing here. Anything else you want to add before we... Okay, that's the public hearing. We have the opportunity to anybody, any member of the public like to speak on this application, please come forward. You want on Zoom? Any member of the public want to speak? So you're anything else like that or good from staff?
Okay.
Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. The commission has up to 65 days to make this decision, but we'll be speaking about it on our agenda later this night.
Okay, so as far as when it, how long before we make a decision that we can actually start the progress?
I would say strong likelihood you'll have a decision this evening.
Okay.
We'll make a decision this evening, then you will file your permit with staff, and then you can go and get your building permits and all that.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Can you guys come out? Or we go to the booth guys who are building and they do an engineer plan? Or do you come out first? No, it's once the commission issues the permit, then you work with the building department on your permits. Okay. That's a separate, but you can work through Abby's office as the building department so they can help you with permits you need and from their plans and all that. Then we go from there. Okay. Thank you. Good luck. Okay, we're going to move on our reorder agenda. Next, we have an application seeking a special permit for a restaurant without alcoholic beverages on 10 Hartford Avenue. Vice Chair Myers, you can read the call to the hearing, please.
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P and Z on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15th North Granby Road. To hear and consider the following item. Application seeking a special permit under zoning regulation section 8.3 and 8.16 for a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages for property located at 10 Hartford Avenue, Unit D4, COCE Zone, File Z-11-24. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file on the Community Development Office.
The applicant and representative here.
Yes. I have a display board evidence here now. Spot without any reason.
You can put it there on the camera. You're missing something. Although the extent... Mark, can you zoom in on this to show on this TV? Any other...
So we can see it. Right up there.
I really can't see it.
That's what we can't see of. Yeah, because he can get it from there. Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, it's the plaza.
Yeah.
Yeah. So okay, so it's just showing the plaza where you're... And the location. Okay. Yeah. I don't think I need to... Everybody's down.
Yeah. Yeah.
We don't think that. Just want to introduce yourself and explain a little bit about what you're doing. From we had a file here, but just for the record, let us know what you want to do.
So my name is Bob Schwartz. I'm the manager and then the owner of the shopping center. I've owned and managed it since 1995. These two gentlemen are affiliated with a restaurant called... Let me introduce themselves.
My name is Mohamed Elena. I'm the owner of Bead Restaurant. I came to this town, don't put up nice Italian pizzeria. I love this town, Granby. I'm from Florida, and I like to open up nice, I love the area, nice atmosphere is nice, so I like to open up one pizza restaurant.
My name is Sean Hartwell. I will be the operations manager for his restaurant.
So I'll give an explanation, and then I'm sure there's going to be a list of questions. So the restaurant is in a space that's 1,460 square feet. It's in the section of the center that's near of like kind food service. Wayback Burger and Bagel Store, et cetera, et cetera. The space previously was not food. It was an insurance agency, which was the last user there. The proposed restaurant, we have a layout, I believe in that packet. There are a total of 16 seats. There's two four-top tables, and the rest are two-top. The layout sort of mimics what Wayback Burger is, where you see the kitchen along the whole length of the demising wall between the two spaces. Their hours of operation are going to be seven days a week, proposing 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And the concept is really a traditional pizzeria as we all know it. They're going to wait to see how things go, whether or not they do delivery. That'll just see how business is, et cetera, what is the need. Otherwise, it's dine-in, dine-out kind of thing. Structurally, it's easy for us to accommodate. Every space is separate there, so they're not sharing any utilities or HVAC or anything with anybody else. So that's easy. And then we have gas, propane, cooking, and vented, just like Wayback is, straight up and out in the back. That's the concept.
Yes, there are just a couple of staff questions. One was Abby, you had about waste and recycling?
Yeah, so just want some additional information regarding waste and recycling on the property, if it can be accommodated within existing receptacles or if you're proposing anything new?
Sure. So in preparation for this meeting, I called Haynes, the local carrier for the trash pickup resources, the center. And I told our rep, her name's Lisa, that we're proposing a 1,460 square foot restaurant, and we need to talk about trash. So what is there now on this side of the shopping center? There are three cans at the end of where the bagel store is. One's regular trash, one's cardboard, and the other one is recycling, and they're distinct from each other. So currently, the pickup schedule is two times per week. So in Payne's opinion, because a fair amount of their business is takeout, that she could have, or Payne's could accommodate the load, and if they misjudge, then she would propose to do a three-time per week pickup. And that's the answer I got back from Payne's. If somebody ever said, well, what about another can? I mean, their load would be a four-yarder, and there's more than enough square footage to put another can on the ground. But through Payne's advice, they really proposed, let's see how it goes. And our first step, if we miscalculate, was we'll pick it up one more time per week and use the existing cans.
So in that case, Abby, there's no site plan change needed, if that's the case?
I'm trying to visualize as many times as I go by, are these cans enclosed in...
They're not. They are off the parking lot, kind of along the wooded line.
Okay.
Been there for years, done that kind, you know? It serves the entire center, so there's no, one tenant has their own can, there's none of that. And the same on the far end, through the other side of the center, they have their own area.
One question, I have to go back to the other staff question, which is one I had is on parking. It's a tight center, and all the shops kind of make them ring around it in the parking. Noticed that the commission did make a waiver back in the day for, it says 29 spaces were waived. But as staff points out, and I've seen it too, a lot of the remaining spaces are being used by, I think mostly food trucks and some other utilities, which is not for parking. Do you have any comment? Is there going to be any changes to that? Because so, I actually spent a lot of time studying the parking.
Those food trucks are on a part of the center that's got nothing to do with his customers because they're in the back of this, this. And it's hidden, and people that are going to go here are not going to go back there. They're going to look for spaces all along here and all along here. Food trucks are owned by James, everybody knows him. Something that just evolved over time. I had nothing to do with it. I didn't bless it. I didn't throw them out. He was growing. You had nothing to do with my tenant base. But it's not going to interfere with this operator. So I actually prepared a really good, what I think is a pretty thorough analysis of parking. And if I met, I think I made enough for everybody. Eat, right? So the first thing I did was, I'll let you, is I put together a table of all the existing tenants and their hours of operation, and what percentage of the shopping center that they occupy, which is in the second document coming. So on the one that you have in front of you, you can see the status of what's there today. And then I went a step further, and I went to every tenant, and I found their hours of operation. And that's what this looks like. Broke it down into two categories, noon to 6:00 PM, and then everything after 6:00 PM. Because I was mimicking their hours of operation, which were 11 until 9:00. And there are 150 parking spaces today. I walked the property and I counted them. I... There are only required, I have a yellow piece of paper, is there, did you get circulated in there? Oh, here we go. So there are 150 spaces there today. And you can see that by breaking it down, I never really put a load on the parking for this operator, given the hours of my existing tenants.
I appreciate the work you've done here. It's very enlightening. I do have a few questions.
Sure.
I don't believe anybody believes that tenant, customers would park in the back spots there, I think.
Where James is, the trucks?
Well, the spots that you referenced behind the...
Right.
...one, where the trucks are. But they certainly would be ideal for employee parking, which would certainly take the load off the front of the parking lot. Also, you have quite a few empty units, a reserve right now, and I believe one of them is one of the bigger anchor tenant stores, the Ogumbas, I believe. If this plaza were to fill up, I believe it would probably render a lot of the snow...
Well...
And I've been there. I frequent their plaza, and I frequent all many of the retailers in there. I can attest that there are times when you go in there and the parking lot's jam, there's no parking. So it's a little bit of a disconnect for me, especially during prime, your Friday night, Thursday night, takeout hours hitting some of the restaurants in there for food. It's a pretty busy plaza. This is just a general observation.
Well, as far as filling the other spaces up, you need to understand really the likelihood of that and the retail climate across America. So when all these things went into effect, like even there was a ruling here in 1989, that it was somewhere in the records, Amazon didn't even exist. And therefore, you could fill these centers with people selling soft foods as well as food. Amazon changed everything, the way people do business. Centers like these are, it's a whole nother world today. And the only thing that's really helping these centers are the building of like multifamily housing in the adjacent areas, and you need support services for that. And a lot of these places are filling up with food. That's really who's out there rescuing these centers. The chance of me ever getting an athletic apparel store or picture poison, they'll never survive. So that space on the corner where the well-known Oogumas restaurant used to be, I've been vacant for 18 years. I've had one or two people look at it, only because the size and it's just, it's just not going to happen. And so nobody has the answer for that. It's a dream, like if Hartford Hospital came, took all three spaces. But even that changed. Urgent care is flat. It goes on and on and on. So I don't, I don't think we're going to have a shot at that. And so that's why we really need to judge these case by case. I mean, we're here right now for that particular space. And when you say a center's busy at times and so on, that's, I get it, but it's better to be busy and everybody feel good as opposed to be a ghost now.
Hundred percent. I guess my only point made. If you had a lever to pull, it would be to ask for those trucks to go.
Can I answer also? Here's one question from them. The bagel shop is in a corner. They close at 2:30. Starbucks in the corner, they close at 7:00, I believe?
Well, that's what my survey shows. Right. But honestly, the majority of his business, because most restaurants, breakfast is nailed, lunch is better for sure, and dinner is where it's at. So when we go to the after 6:00 PM, I don't know, the numbers really hold up well. We study it that way.
I think it's great you answered my questions. I do one last question that I had, and I guess it's just an observation. Some of the asphalt and the parking lot, especially...
Just got a contract.
All right. It's a precaution.
Just got a contract.
Awesome.
I do have a question.
I was just wondering, the one thing I'm looking at the parking to is, I expect this is going to be fantastic pizza.
I expect too.
And then, you know, if you have a relatively small scenario, you're going to be, for people like me, it's going to be a lot of pickup, takeout. Maybe that's not your business model, but that's what I'm thinking of. And that's where Commissioner Myers, I think, is thinking of, is I've been on that plaza there sometimes on a Friday. People like to come, and it's tough. People are doing the circle and circling. But I, in my mind, is you're going to have, and I don't know if you want to answer, is that your business model? But I think you're going to have people calling for takeout. People are going to be hunting for parking spots. James has got fantastic restaurants there he's developing. I don't know if a restaurant were to come to you and want to go on the Oogumas Plaza, what would you do then?
Case by case.
But you know, you've got to think, you've got to think about your parking and planning. And I'm all for what they're doing, is we want to make sure we don't overload the future, you know, we're planning this.
What I would do at that point in time, one, I would go right to James, and he'd have to move everything out of there. Because I have, I have no rage with that, but I don't really need to do it yet. It's an hobby, it's a gift. I mean, you wouldn't need to do that. You know, I own a Vermont real estate in a lot of towns, and I never was out there for restaurants. And it's really three operators, for the most part. And we're just not on the map, you know, for, you know, the MAPS restaurants and the, you know, the Zorro Group and all that. Again, they've got 68 restaurants, and they look to do, you know, locations that are $5 million, so we're just not there. So we're really the small guy. And I'm not sure if a restaurant would ever come because we've kind of hit a lot of the food groups, so it's tough. But I respect that, and if we do, then we'll just have to analyze it at that time. But we know the first step is trucks would have to leave. That's all I can propose. I'm sorry.
No, no, my question was basically along the same lines as the...
Yeah.
Do you, as you, as you're planning to open, do you have, do you have a notion of what your ratio of sit-down to takeout is going to be, or not really, not yet?
Not yet.
Not yet. We're working.
Kids after school coming in.
Yeah, kids after school.
Kids after school will be coming in.
Yeah, sure. But I'm working on, so best as I can.
Did you bring any samples? I was thinking on the way here, no other restaurants, different examples.
He had told me that he went and he was researching area, and he actually dined everywhere himself. You know, you know.
That's smart.
And it was smart. And, and look, everybody sometimes thinks they're the greatest and the big egos, you know, no offense, but you know, he said, are you kidding me? You know, that kind of thing. So, and it's not like he's doing anything complicated. It's the kind of stuff we all grew up on, which was the best pizza in town, kind of idea.
I love cooking, I love pizzas, I love my experience very, I love cooking, and you guys see the difference.
I'm certainly happy to hear something is pursuing one of the spaces in the plaza. So it's really, the questions that we're asking are really just sort of what-if kind of questions. But in terms of having another, having another space in the plaza that's full, I'm happy to see.
Eric? If the pizza's good, I think the parking will work itself out one way or another.
Pizza's really good, they will end up doing it. There'll be that much demand.
Well, I think it's great. I think it's a nice addition of the food groups we have. There used to be a wonderful ABC pizza that we all, our kids all grew up on and we all loved, and it's all, it's been missed. A lot of people, so I think you make it a niche that's there.
Right.
Same concern about the parking. You go there on a Friday night, someone's at the package store, someone's trying to get Chinese takeout, now we're going to have another takeout place, might overwhelm it between the five and seven hour. It might be a concern, and true to Myers, Eric Myers', is employee parking. Where is it now and is it going to be? You know, you're going to have to negotiate with the other stores to find out where we can put these people.
you're going to have to negotiate with the other stores to find out where we can put these people.
Yeah, like I said, I put the load on the statistics.
Yeah. As for the alcohol, is it going to be canned, bottled? No draft or anything like that?
No draft, no draft, no draft, no draft.
Are you going to offer slices?
If people ask for slices, I wouldn't do it.
Because that will increase the kids and stuff like that. More traffic.
I'm so many for the schools, like kids, they come in slices, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I could see there, I could see there being after, after the pizza lets out. But both of those kids are going to be blocked.
You'll be there? Definitely.
My ingredients are fresh, no frozen or nothing. It's going to be fresh. You guys will see. Everybody get a sample from me.
You're welcome. Welcome back.
Just one question, this, I guess we go to yourself. Is the, try to give some flexibility so you don't have to come back? But is the hours, would you foresee you want? Would you ever see yourself needing a tentacle seating? Some pieces open at 10:30? Would you want to have, you don't have to stay open to there, but the commission can give you up until 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock.
For example, if families come in late, like nine, you know, the one willing to come in. Yes.
Because do we have other restaurants in there? Abby, do you know if we have hours restrictions?
I don't know off the top of my head. For some restaurants, the commission has, yes.
Mostly it's like 9:30. That's about it.
But if we did, if we gave you to 10 or 11, you don't have to stay open to there. But it gives you that, that's between you and the owner of the plaza, if that's okay.
If you get a mad rush after a football game or something, 9:00 o'clock might not be doable.
Okay.
Any other staff? Any other comments for you guys?
We'll just open it up to the public in case there's any members of the public that'd like to comment on this application. Please come forward. Anyone on Zoom? Marty, do you want to say something? I took myself off you.
It sounds good. No, no questions.
Let me see. Any other questions before we close? Comments?
Question.
All right. We'll close the public hearing. The commission has 65 days to make this decision, but we'll be talking about it later on our agenda.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that's here. So we got back to our ordered agenda. Our last public hearing will be one seeking a permit for 10 lot, the F R D re-subdivision, Cedarville Heights. Mike Chairman Myers, we need to call the hearing.
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P and Z on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, at 7:00 P.M. in the Granby Town Hall meeting room. 15 North Granby Road, to hear and consider the following item. An application seeking a special permit under zoning regulation section 8.2 for a 10 lot F R D re-subdivision, Cedarville Heights, for property located at 604 Cedar Lane, R2A Zone, File P-1-24. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file on the community development office.
Eddie's here, so.
Thank you. First, I'd like to apologize for my late arrival. I'm sorry, and I apologize to anybody in the public that was also interested in hearing this at 7:00. My name is Ed Lally. I'm a licensed professional engineer in Lansing, Beyer, and here to represent tonight TFHB LLC in their application for section six of Cedarville Heights. Full disclosure, Tom Friedo is a principal of TFHB, as am I. We're the only two members of that LLC and have been since the turn of the century. And only, only in the Cedarville Heights project. We have no other connection. Tom's a great builder in town. There's a reputation that precedes him. This is section six of Cedarville Heights. It was originally approved as a portion of section four in 2005. And I could really condense my marks simply by pointing to Abby and saying what she said, because her staff report was very thorough. But I'll give you some history since then. Public improvements were not completed, as she noted, and the approval of these lots lapsed. It was as though it never happened. So we started over with this application, which is part of section four, but which is now called section six, and it is 10 lots on 16 acres and a public street called Cedar Lane, which is 1,200 feet long to the cul-de-sac. There are currently 77 lots on 382 acres at Cedarville Heights. We're proposing, as I said, 10 lots on 16 of those acres. The zoning regulations for an F R D, which is designed to allow somewhat smaller lots, but on a subdivision and all subdivisions, I think, over 10 acres or more lots, I may not be right there, but any subdivision of size has to be an F R D to preserve the character of Granby. Accordingly, we had to give 176 round number acres of open space was required for the entire subdivision. And we have already donated 182 or a little over six acres more than required. As you know, the regulations require that the open space meet certain characteristics and an awful lot of good, buildable land, excellent for active open space and excellent for protection of the environment and retention of the character of Granby was dedicated both to the land trust, 90 acres to them, and the balance to the homeowners association. Accordingly, no additional open space is required as we've met that requirement. In conjunction with this application, we went to wetlands. I approached the town wetlands agent. She requested that the wetlands be re-flagged, relocated, remapped. And we revised the plans and limits of the wetlands regulated area accordingly. There were some very small changes, but they were important to be noted so that the regulation area was appropriately delineated. We revised the impacts. We revised the plans and designs to minimize impacts. And we've agreed that we post tree tags at the edge of the regulated area to advise people who buy those lots that this area beyond this point is regulated by the Wetlands Commission and you can't do any activity without contacting the town and getting information. And we'd give a phone number for Abby's office on that. We received a wetlands permit to perform all the regulated activities related to this application. With regards to Conservation Commission, we met with them a while ago. We revised the landscaping proposed in this project. We arbitred removing invasive species from each lot. We agreed not to plant non-native landscaping. We provided protection of existing vegetation to remain, and we achieved a positive review. More recently, since the membership of the Conservation Commission had changed, it was suggested that we appear before them again. We presented the plans revised per the first Conservation Commission review. They were well received and we received a second positive review from Conservation Commission. According to town staff, we revised the drainage to address concerns of town engineer and director of public works. We revised erosion controls to upgrade them and use a different type of erosion controls, which weren't necessarily available or popular in 2024. We revised the street width and several related concerns to bring the plans up to current standard because in the last almost 20 years, some things have changed. We've, we've defined the lots on the plan in several places, being subject to and members of the Second Cedarville Heights Homeowners Association, which among other things, limits accessory buildings, controls tree clearing, regulates the height of structures and regulates the keeping or disallows the keeping of livestock and farm animals. We addressed all the town staff comments except a few, which were in memos from the town engineer and from Abby. Also, Abby had spelled out the procedure of bonding and filing the bylaws and other items that are necessary to proceed. And we have no issue with the town engineer or the director of community development comments. The, there was an issue as to whether we had permission to grade on an adjacent lot. We asked Michael Budlong to submit something that would provide for grading on his lot to achieve this subdivision. Michael, in that letter, recognized that the grading on, on his lots are sidelined and the construction of this road was shown on the original subdivision plan and shown on his individual plot plan and that some grading for sightline improvements were conducted at the time his house was constructed. But he said that if any additional grading is required for that and the grading that's required for the construction of the new road were permitted by his signature on that letter. And his only caveat was that we replaced the disturbed areas with a good one, which we've agreed, of course, to do. So in summation, Tom and I are here to answer any questions if you may have. This plan has been looked at very thoroughly by this commission from almost 20 years ago. We received re-agreements since then. The plans lapsed. We've gone back through the regulation, regulatory process, the approval process. We received positive reviews of everyone we've submitted the plans to. There are a few outstanding house cleaning issues, but we have no problem with them. So we're here to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
I have one. From our past experiences, when we go way back, you had one rogue homeowner who clear cut his property.
You had what?
You had one rogue homeowner who clear cut his property beyond what he should have.
Right.
And I just want to make sure that on your plot plans and your homeowners, whatever, that they know they aren't in there to clear the whole lot.
Right. It's funny you bring that up because I was talking to my wife about that same issue the other day. First of all, every, every plan we've, well, these plans and the original plans all said that the tree clearing is limited to what is shown here or what is approved upon submission of a plot plan. Normally, my office, or now T.K. Barreski's office, would compare that plot plan showing that limited clearing. That rogue lot owner never asked for the plot plan, never received the plot plan. He did, however, receive all of the plans, which state on it what is allowed and what is not allowed. Our realtor is exceedingly careful about that. And they went and clear cut. Tom, it's my relation, and Tom actually discussed the issue with them, told them, you shall not do this. You cannot do this. They did it anyway. You can't fix stupid. So that, that happened. We were not happy about it. The commission was not happy about it. They came back and proposed a bogus landscaping plan to the commission. I spoke out because they wanted to plant willows on the top of Cedarville Heights. And I don't think there's one within 500 yards of the top of Cedarville Heights. And I believe an appropriate landscaping plan was worked out. I also understand that that lot is now for sale. So we will take extra care in presenting the data. The plans say, not only in the cover sheet, but on the subdivision plan, that the, that they are, it's a lengthy note, number 22. It's about that big on the claim. And it says that those lots, specifically by number, are part of, are restricted by the covenants and restrictions of the Second Homewarden Association, Second Cedarville Heights Home Association. And that those lots are members of that. So there's no question. And we'll try to avoid stupid in the future, but it wasn't us.
Why not?
Did that.
I had some questions to Abby. I saw there was two staff comments and then some engineering comments from Abby.
Yes.
So I want to go through those.
Yep. So the town engineer and I both reviewed the plans. There were several revisions. So the two outstanding I have, I'm just asking that where schedule H can be located on the land records be added to sheet one so it's clear and no one has to go hunting for that. And then on sheet eight, just correcting the detail, so the street is shown to be 22 feet instead of 20. And then the town engineer did have five minor comments on his memo dated May 23. And again, you'll see it's, you know, pretty clerical, minor issues. And then I would also just like to point out, in my memo, under considerations, the five points that I outlined there, in addition to anything else the commission identifies, those are rather standard. As applicant reference, it speaks to when the bylaws can be executed, establishing the bond, reimbursing for the town engineer services, E N S bond, and then obviously the minor corrections and additions based on our two amendments we made. The applicant has also requested a waiver in the application fee.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
If you want to, yes.
Yeah, okay. On March 27th, we sent the letter to the county and zoning commission requesting a waiver in the application fees. We paid an application fee at the time of first review. Of course, the staff has additional time since then in reviewing these plans and processing this again. However, we paid over $192,000 in property taxes on these lots alone since they, since 2005. And we were, we were willing to pay the, we sent in a check for $200, I believe, at the time of our application, willing to pay for the legal fees for the legal notice, I should say. Legal notice fees, which were, I believe, less than $200. We're not looking for a refund, but we would like to waive the overall fee because, so in 2008, the market fell apart. And Tom and I made a decision to not cut the price on these lots, in part because Tom is friends with almost everybody he ever built a house for. And he thought it would be really bad to lower the price on houses because our experience is that the lot ends up being relatively fixed percentage of the overall house. And if you cut the price of the lot, you cut the price of the house. If you cut the price of the house, $10,000 usually cut the price to the lot, $10,000. Usually cut the price of the house $40,000. If you drop the price $30,000, usually drop almost 100 grand off the value in the price of the house. And it wasn't, in our opinion, mostly Tom's, I have to admit. It wasn't our collective opinion that it would be fair to those people who had purchased at Cedarville Heights to suddenly put smaller, less expensive, out of character homes at Cedarville Heights. So we held the price, and that's what delayed this thing from selling out quickly. So we're asking for a reduction in the fee to $200. Thank you.
Abby, on that note, is that permissible in our regulations?
It's not clear in the regulations. The full application fee would be $3,460. The commission has approved waivers before. I understand the point of paying taxes on these lots. However, the application fee is intended to not only cover the cost of the legal notice, mailing notice to a butters, obviously staff time for both myself, the town engineer. The director of public works was involved in the review of this one due to public infrastructure. So there was definitely more staff time than went into this, even though it would, you know, is a reapproval just from the changes.
On the other hand, no one had to educate a child on any of these lots for the last 20 years. No one had to plot the route for the last 20 years.
I hear that I just have to, you know, we have the application fees for a reason. And if I have to defer to him, if staff has done work, if any other applicant comes in and they have to do the same amount of work, could be duplicate of a lot. I don't know what it is, but I have to trust staff if they spent the time. You know, if it was a rubber stamp and they just looked at and said it's the same plans you had five years ago, I don't have to do anything, but it sounds like there was more work. So. What's the commissioner thinking?
Well, I mean, we, these approvals last for a limited amount of time. And this one lapsed and need to be looked at again. So I'm not really hearing, and certainly the desire to not have smaller homes there again, I don't think it's really something that we would utilize to decide to waive a fee. So I'm, I'm not against waiving it.
What do you think, Polly?
Well, I would kind of think that since it had come before us before, did that allow you to have less time on it than you would normally? So that if you did half the amount of time, then you would, if it's the same amount of time as it was the first time, then I think the staff needs to be reimbursed and that's where our budget comes from, comes in on this. It's tough. I understand your thinking, but it was a lot less time that was spent and a lot less work.
No, it definitely involved a thorough review.
Okay. Yeah.
That answers the question I had. That answers the question I have. Instead, I would refer to the public comments. Oh. Oh, I think someone are coming up close. Okay. Eric, anything else?
See what the public has to say.
Okay. The rest of the conditions that are here that Abby stated are okay with the bylaws and the?
No problems whatsoever.
Okay. Just Abby, for the record, our regulations require to go to the conservation commission. They did go there.
Yes.
And wetlands, you state, is still good?
Yes. Yeah, but it's good for five years.
Okay. I don't have any other. Do anybody have any questions? Since it's been through us. Do you have anything else to add?
Did you vote on the waiver?
Nope. We're going to discuss that.
Pardon?
We will discuss that when we close the air.
Well, thank you for your consideration.
Well, I thought you didn't have to go there. I have to stay, because the public, so any members of the public would like to speak to us? Please introduce yourself and address with the staff.
My name's Mike Campton, 118 Portland Way, North Granby, Connecticut.
Do that a little bit louder and clearer and slower so we can catch you.
Mike Campton, 118 Portland Way, North Granby, Connecticut. I've lived in the Siderno Heights community for about six years now after moving from the Boston area. I've become friends with many of the residents there. I'm raising two children there. And I also wanted to address the commission on two matters, which I think the developer has created a fantastic community. We love living there. Almost every resident I speak to loves living there. Tons of families live there. But there are two matters that I think need to be addressed, perhaps not for this development, but perhaps for future developments. Item number one is with respect to multiple homeowners associations. Currently, there's two homeowners associations in the community, even though it's one in this community as you see in the notes. There's similar covenants and bylaws for the community, although they're not exactly the same. There have been issues in the past with respect to some of the covenants, but most have been resolved, they'll say. The residents have met a number of times to discuss the concept of having multiple HOAs. We don't quite know why there are two. It leads to some confusion within the community on what can and can't occur. It leads to confusion with who is running the second HOA and why the current residents of that second HOA don't have control. My understanding is that the second HOA was created around 2006, which is quite some time now, and that the control remains to the developer until a certain amount of lots are sold. Residents have given me their opinions. I've collected those. We've created surveys in the community. Most feel that the HOAs should be merged and they should always have been one. I actually have a letter I didn't write here, and you'll see why in a minute, that I would like to read into the record.
So just, are you, we're here to talk about the application for this. Unfortunately, we're not here, we don't have authority over homeowners associations. If, I mean, Abby, I don't know, if it's specifically to this application, you know, if you want to tie it into that, you can keep going, but I just want to make sure we're not getting off subject.
I believe it's tied into this because this section six here is part of the second homeowners association.
Because I don't think our regulations, and Abby correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have any authority over homeowners associations, right?
So, no, we typically don't. However, the town of Granby is named in the HOA documents, or there are restrictive covenants as a party. So I would be inclined to accept the comments and then let the applicant respond.
I think there's a number of regulations within the planning and zoning commission's purview, primarily Section 8.20, .10, .20, all the way through the whole Section 8.20 with respect to HOAs. One talks about bylaws and covenants being accepted by the town attorney, equal voting within the HOAs, mandatory membership, and so forth, the ability to collect dues. There's a whole host of regulations here. So I just would like to read the letter for a moment, please. Lesson learned from a long-term HOA. My wife and I are four-year residents of Granby, the last 23 in North Granby and Siderno Heights. It's a wonderful neighborhood, a couple of quirks in our homeowners association. In this letter, I will share my observations of our HOA and recommendations to improve it. Some of the recommendations require the assistance of the town planning and zoning as it affects future development. Background: The first concern in our neighborhood with HOAs is that we have two of them. Only one is active. The first HOA was activated nearly 20 years ago, in 2004 or 2005, and was instrumental in installing signage at our two entrances and continues to maintain entrances. The residents pay an annual assessment of approximately $100 to support monthly upkeep and insurance. At the same time, the original HOA was activated, the developer began developing additional sections within the neighborhood and received approval from the town for a second HOA, which had never been activated. As such, some residents are required by the active HOA to provide maintenance, some volunteer to assist, and others pay nothing. The general reason for the HOA not being activated is that the developer decided not to pursue building more homes on new private roads, and as such, the threshold of completed homes compared to the original plan will not hit 90%. A second issue is that the developer has assumed the right to determine which homes will or not be included in the HOA. This has become a sticking point when the developer, one, could change the rules to allow certain animals on lots when all other existing lots could not. Luckily, the lots are listed in earlier development plans, which also forbid certain animals. This was resolved in the court case. It is unfortunate that 20 years after the neighborhood is created for developers to want to change rules to sell new homes that will impact existing families without their consent. Recommendations: I believe the basic issues in the formation and activation of our HOA can be resolved with three policy changes to future developments and some remedies to what is already in place. Number one, single HOA. Any development planned with an HOA may have only one. Number two, all-in. If a development has an HOA, all homes are included and have the same covenants. Number three, required activation. HOAs must be activated after a time limit, such as five years, regardless of the percentage of homes built, and any homes built after activation are automatically included. Lastly, remedy. While these proposed recommendations prevent future developments from our experience, it will not remedy what is already in place. To do that, I oppose the following. Within the above policy being adopted by the planning and zoning for future developments, policy would also be enacted, requiring any existing HOA that is more than five years old be activated within 90 days, including officer selection for future self-government. Number two, if multiple HOAs exist, the developer must work with residents to merge them within six months. In summary, the HOA and its covenants that was originally defined in the Siderno Heights has helped create a very welcoming neighborhood to live in and raise children, and we want to maintain the location where new homes can also be built. I believe these three changes can simplify our neighborhood and future developments without unnecessary restriction to the developers.
Who wrote the letter?
One of the residents in our community.
We need to know the name.
The name and the address. Name and address for the letter, right?
It was given to me, and I'm presenting it tonight.
So you don't want to tell us who wrote it?
Good letter.
I summarized it.
And so if you want to say author, if you want it to be part of the record, we have to know who the author is. We don't take anonymous things for record. If you just want to read it and not give it to staff, that's fine, it won't be in the record. Right, Abby? I say that right?
Well, typically, comments are accepted, but it's the weight the commission wants to give it.
Okay. This is here.
Good letter.
Hold on a minute, you'll get me next. All right, thank you.
So my question would be, it still has to be answered. Why were there two HOAs? And why haven't they been merged if they are allowed to be merged? My second point is completely unrelated to the HOAs. It's related to conservation easements.
Sure. Does this have to do, I let you go on the HOA for a while to hear your comments, does this have to do with this application?
Yeah, I believe there's open space surrounding this section six here, and it's concerned with the open space.
So there's no additional open space proposed with this application because it has already been dedicated as part of previous phases? So there's no change to the open space with this application?
So I can't speak. Would this be brief? What did you want us, what's the issue have?
With this application?
I mean, it's related to all the open space, some of it which is development here.
What happens, it has to deal with this app, with what we're talking about, this?
The open space that you see on that plan is already an open space. It's not part of the application.
Since you're here, it's something which wants, in order to have this section six, he needs to have the open space, right? He hasn't.
Yeah, he has, he already dedicated it before he asked for this. That's why we're saying it's not part of this application.
Right there.
It's already there. It's already been dedicated. He's not, he doesn't have to provide it.
If you want to give me a 30 second, I mean, I don't want to give you your time, but just, if you want to be brief with your comment about the open space.
Okay. So some of the open spaces are deeded to the HOA, and there's conservation easements over them that the Granby Land Trust has certain rights to. My understanding is that these open spaces were not meant to be public access. Many of the open spaces are not vast woodlands.
Yeah.
They're rather small areas. And the suggestion would be to, for the planning and zoning commission, to ask when these easements are written, to be very specific with what rights are conveyed to the Granby Land Trust or whoever has the easement over the property. We've had numerous instances of people coming onto these easements thinking that they're public access when we believe they're not. You know, there's areas that are just as wide as this room that people are traversing through. There's no trails, nothing, and that leads to certain complications. You know, we don't want to tie up the police in the town at all, except for the issue that comes up. Overall, with respect to this application, I fully hope this gets approved. I would hope there's more homes here. I have no problem with the developer whatsoever. There's just two matters that I think are easily resolvable that don't infringe on anyone's rights or, you know, freedoms. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public or our Zoom?
Good evening. I'm attorney Michael Budlong, and I've lived at 48 Siderno Heights. I'm proud to do so. I was reflecting on, and I suppose a spirit of robust transparency, I've been a good friend, and Tom's been an occasional client, not much out there in Siderno Heights, but we've been friends and colleagues in many ways for about 20 years. And I was realizing, when I was thinking about coming here and actually being the embodiment of that letter you have in front of me, I think I'm the only one that is actually directly connected with this subdivision. The street goes right by where my house is. And that's a place I've lived, I should tell you, longer than any place in my 80 years of life, that particular house. So I'm particularly interested in everything around it. I also, as a trustee, own the adjoining lot, which is 44. And so I guess in a lot of ways, I'm the most impacted by the development. And I might tell you that I was speaking with one of my neighbors across the street, and they just had a child, and I went over to visit the child, about six months old, maybe a month or two ago, and he was saying, boy, I hope that subdivision goes through. I said, why? He said, because that little guy right there is going to need some people to play with. And it seems to me like, a long time ago, I heard someone, at my age, someone reflected that they weren't going to be interested in any development because it perhaps wasn't going to benefit them anyway. And I think I responded by saying, just because you won't have a chance to sit under the shade of a tree, doesn't mean you shouldn't plant one, or in this case, preserve one. So as to this particular development, I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to living long enough to every family that wants to move to North Granby like I did 20 years ago. Raised my kids in Hartford, in West Hartford, but there's a time for everything. I think that's probably out of ecclesiastry, in terms of time for every sneeze and every purpose of the heaven. So in any rate, I look forward to whatever minor disruption that this side of lanes going to mean to me. And I will come home every night from work. I still do work every day in Hartford. And if you go in real early, you don't have traffic, I should tell you, probably all of that. Anyway, I'll come home every day, and I'll look around, and I'll see what's been done. I'm not in the nature of complaining. I do that all day long. I've been practicing law for 55 years, as you gotta get. So I endorse this, and I endorse it as being progress in many ways. And when my neighbors say, we want kids there, I understand that. Raised my kids in neighborhoods where they can walk and walk to, and ride their bikes and do that. And that street is exactly what that is right now. We have more walkers. That, oh, I can't imagine it, but I guess they do it for their health or some other good reason. A day doesn't go by that we don't see dozens of people walking by. And those people who are on side of the lane will walk out, probably wave to me, I hope, and they'll walk up the hill, down the hill, and everything else. So because I am impacted by that, that street, that is going to go in there, it's going to be something that will be in my vision every day, and so, it's not, it's like, maybe I see there's totally positive development and extension of a very nice neighborhood. Amazing, you know, having lived in 14 road shooters in Hartford, this is a better neighborhood. I look over at Montomb. I don't know who else knows about Montomb. Our president Calvin Coolidge used to court his life on Montomb at a park there. So enough of history. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and otherwise, I will conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, thank you. A little history. There are a number of lots, 73, 79, 83, 87, 97, 117, 125, 121R, and 123R, 10 lots. They were Phase 1, Section 1. I can't remember if it was Phase or Section 1. Those lots were done when, well, backing up a little bit, Tom Frito and I were parochial to this whole thing. His dad, Andy Messina, were the main drivers to put this property together. We were part of it, but we were like secondary ones. Tom's dad got pancreatic cancer and died. Andy Messina died. Tommy and I had signed on the line, we're like, what are we going to do? We had no choice. We went forward. We developed those lots and used some of the money to purchase some additional land to provide a second access to get to the rear property. And then the first section was those 10 lots. The second section was 20-something lots over in the west, northwest corner, Portland Way and a private road, and the first part of Siderno Heights, which was designed with a cul-de-sac. The second, the next section was the other entrance of Siderno Heights, which was designed in a cul-de-sac. The first section was built, of course, if I back up, we had mega debt and little resource. So we took the first 10 lots, we got that going, we paid down some of the land, we bought some additional land. We entered into another company called Siderno Heights LLC. Siderno Heights LLC did the first 35 lots or thereabouts inside the project. Siderno Heights LLC had its own attorney, and the attorney wrote the covenants and restrictions, which were worked on with staff, because if you look at them, there's several restrictions that are pertaining to land surface open space and regular open space and what's the how tall the houses should be and things like that, which staff and members of the Land Trust had a lot of input, and the planning and zoning commission at that time had a lot of input. But for some reason, that first section of 30-ish homes was the Siderno Heights Homeowners Association. And there's a couple clauses in there. Certain things cannot be changed, no matter what. Other things can be changed, but after all the lots are sold, and has to be 75%, I think, of the members of the homeowners association have to go in a positive way to change the Siderno Heights, the covenants and restrictions of the Siderno Heights Homeowners Association. That was called just that, not the first, but just the Siderno Heights. One of the clauses was no new members. So Siderno Heights Homeowners Association slammed its door on any new members after, until such time as all the lots were sold. until such time as all the lots were sold. And the homeowners in the Sider Mill Heights Homeowners Association, I'll call that the first one, voted to change the no new members issue. When we came along with the next section, not all those lots were sold. We had zero opportunity to get that provision changed to have one homeowners association. And yet, a homeowners association, in my opinion, is required by the regulations. And especially since there's open space, because the land trust said, "We want these 90 acres over here. We don't want any land associated with lots. We don't want a lot of lots backing up to the land trust property." Because when a tree falls in the forest, the first thing that happens is our phone rings and somebody says, "A tree fell down. Come and clean up the mess." And so we ended up with land trust open space and homeowners association open space. Had to have a homeowners association, couldn't join the first, had to create the second. If you look at the covenants and restrictions, they're almost all the same, except that Huck Brown especially got involved in the second Sider Mill Heights Homeowners Association and put provisions in there that said that if somebody's aggrieved by somebody's action, they could bring a lawsuit against them and recover their legal fees. I don't think the first homeowners association has that. We couldn't get the first, I don't think we could get because of that provision. The first homeowners association did join the second, so we never asked. And the first one can't take any new members, so we had to have a second. So we have two homeowners associations with slightly different covenants and restrictions. And they can be melded into one, excuse me, they cannot be melded into one because you can't impose the second restrictions on the first, and the first can't take the second unless they vote. So the only solution, and I do, I would like to say that my peripheral understanding of the first homeowners association is it functions well, and that the second one is essentially dysfunctional. So the question is, can Section 6 join the first? No, not unless they vote. Can, would the first like to join the second? My opinion would be no. Why would I subject myself to legal, potential legal expenses because I did something wrong without even thinking about it or knowing about it? So the two homeowners associations cannot become one. The first homeowners association could vote to accept additional members and offer for $100 a year, which is darn cheap, access to the first homeowners association open space, et cetera, et cetera. But this is something that only the homeowners associations can work on. I can't offer these 10 lots into the first because they can't accept them unless 75% of those people vote to have one HOA. Now, it's odd, I find it odd, that people are concerned about the first HOA and why they aren't joined, but they don't know that they can't join. Somebody needs to read the HOA rules and regulations, at least the first one. So we have open space that exists. We have more than enough open space. We have lots that are part of the Massey Plan that were approved once before and meet all your requirements. One last issue. I'd like to direct your attention to sheet, to page three, Sheet 3, if that could be put up on the screen. Okay. Did you move that over a little bit? It seems to be expanded. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. You look on 53, it says open space. There's an open space path there. You can see there's a pipe right down the path, not the path, the strip, open main strip. So there's a pipe going right down the strip. It goes through the S and the P. You can see the little wheelie lines on either side. That's limited tree removal to install that drainage pipe. The open space and the drainage were designed so that there would be a way to walk down this path. If you look between, if you look right here, excuse me, you see open space and open space. And that's an existing woods road. The subdivision was designed, throughout the subdivision, to locate in the field all those old woods roads that may be now overgrown, so that the paths that existed would be in the strips of open space. And so now those haven't been maintained, but they were there a while ago. I was out on section, the other part of Section 4, which is not before you now, and those paths were easily defined in that area. So the intent was that the open space would be designed around the existing structure, infrastructure, if I can call it that, that provided paths and accessways to the open space. So it was well thought out, in part because your regulations forces us to do that, and your staff and your commission encouraged and forced us to do that. But we were stuck with having to have a second homeowners association. Are there any questions on either the open space issue or the HOA issue? I'll throw any.
I honestly don't think you really have a choice of what to say.
No, I may have questions, but I don't think it applies directly to this application.
You answered the HOA question, if there was even a possible, so I'll be satisfied.
And I would encourage the first HOA because it is run well, at least that's my understanding, to approach the second HOA, or at least the members there, and say, "Hey, can we get together?" It would be advantageous to everybody. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments, questions before we... Abby, anything else from staff? No. All right, no other questions or comments. We will close the public hearing. Commissioner has 65 days to make this decision. We'll discuss it as soon as we can. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and participation. Item D is noted on the agenda, was postponed to June 11 for site plan application on Sandbrook Street, so we'll move to seven. Receive applications and schedule public hearings. Abby, besides the June 11 one here, we have two more. Do you want to explain?
Yep. The first one is an application seeking a one-lot subdivision. And this is for a recently created lot, so it does not yet have an address, but it's adjacent to 186 Key Street to the south. This was a first cut or re-split that they did. And this was the applicant who was before the commission a while back, asking about some changes to the regulations and whatnot, so they're coming in for one-lot subdivision there. And then the second application is seeking a site plan modification for expanded parking, and this is for 175 Barn Door Hills Road, Julian's Farm Store.
Yeah. They've been busy.
They're busy, busy, busy.
Yeah. So June, we do those, the next June?
June 11.
Everybody good with that? June? And then we'll have the other one.
Yes. Yep, 5/17.
Item 8, consideration applications. We've concluded public hearing. We concluded three hearings. Go in order from what we did. We did, the first was for a garage in excess of 600 square feet on Granville Road. Had no issues with it. Staff said this. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the application as presented for garage in excess of 600 square feet at 133 Granville Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next, we had an application for special permits for restaurants serving alcoholic beverages at 10 Hartford Avenue, Unit D4. I like the idea of business going back in there. It's been a lot of empty fronts, and you seem very energetic. I had some questions on the parking. However, I believe based reading staff's memo that there is adequate parking to our regulations, including the waiver. And the owner indicated that if he did run out of spots, he would ask the other tenant to move his truck. So I didn't see anything there within the regulations, and I think it's a good idea, good business, so.
I think we can clear some more space, too, when the board decides to make that parking lot change. I think you're going to draw some of the stuff back from the Bay Harbor area. It's going to go back over there, so.
Well, the other question was hours. Did we want to...
Hours. I want to let him go to an hour or two later than he...
I would recommend it. Like I said, if there's a football game, everybody's always looking for something afterwards. It sounds like it would be a good idea.
I think that's right. I couldn't throw 11.
Yeah.
Starting, starting when he asked for it.
Say he said 11, 10, 11.
There was also, I wrote down some changes, which I'll read here, just propose. If it's not needed, we don't have to have it. But there was some trash this Russian trashed off.
I don't think we have to do any because he's not changing his dumpsters.
Well, there was some, again, I don't know that we need to, but there was some discussion about using the existing dumpster, dumpsters, with the express understanding that dumpsters would be emptied more frequently per week if needed. And I even thought so much as that the Office of the Director of Community Development had the discretion to direct the applicant to increase frequency if applicable. But if it's not needed, it's not needed.
I don't know if you put that into any business that you have to empty your dumpster when it's overflowing. That's like, is there, if somebody didn't empty their dumpster and it's overflowing, isn't that a...
Yeah, we'd usually work with the health district in that case, and then if it's not big enough, they would come in for an enlargement of their enclosure or look at increasing frequency.
I do that where work and pains is very receptive, and we've actually had to increase our pains. When we got busier pre-COVID, it was like twice a week. Now they're coming three times a week, the same type of situation they're going to have. And I think it'll, it'll work out as long, but you're right. I mean, I don't know if there should be enforcement on it or not, but...
Do you want to make sure you're in the permit?
I mean, wouldn't it hurt maybe to have, just so it's a little, you know, a little bit more teeth in case it is an issue?
I heard we had, there was some good discussion.
Well, I think there were a couple of questions about it, so I think...
I'll propose a motion. We approve the application seeking the special permit under zoning regulations, Section 8.3 and 8.16, for a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages for property located at 10 Hartford Avenue, Unit D4 COCE zone. Hours of operation to be 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week. Tenant can use the existing dumpsters at the plaza with the express understanding that dumpsters will be emptied more frequently per week if needed. The Office of the Director of Community Development will have discretion to direct the applicant to increase frequency if applicable.
Another motion, the second as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Centals would be good.
All right. We also concluded application for Sider Mill Heights for FRD re-subdivision. That's extensive discussion. I guess just to start off with on the application fee. I'll turn it to you since you wanted to comment when we close.
Well, work was done. Work needs to get paid for, so there needs to be a fee, clearly. I don't know, if somebody asked that, and maybe it was something asked about possibly, who's you, Paul, about, is it in order to reduce a fee to cover minimal costs? But I don't have any ability to assess how much money has been spent by the town engineer, by the review, or staff, and if that equals $3,400. I don't know what the answer to that is.
Yeah, just, I think, Mark, to clarify your point, you asked if there's a provision in the regulations for it. So when we look at reductions, you know, I think it is appropriate to look and point to something in the regulations. We really don't have anything in the subdivision regulations for reductions or waivers. The commission has waived when someone has reapplied within a short period of time, you know, if they had to withdraw for whatever reason, and when they resubmit, the commission has asked that they only cover the cost of the legal notice, publication fee.
Because there's been no changes.
Correct. But in, this really isn't the same to one of those.
I feel for the applicant and the taxes, but I also look at a precedent. I could be a landowner and say, "I've paid thousands of dollars on this lot for, lived here all these years, and I don't need to pay an application." So I understand that I was paid a lot in property taxes, but I also, if staff did put in the work, I think that's what the application treats for, so. I think the case you said, Abby, if it was withdrawn, it came right back, is a different story than this was site plan expired, right? So I'm open for other comments.
Well, like, just speaking for myself, I'd have a hard time explaining at a meeting of the Board of Selectment why we waived it when our staff did the work. That's the problem I have with it. To me, it's, did we do the work? Yes, we did. And is that the approximate value of it? Right? It is. So I'm sorry, I have trouble finding a way around that.
I don't support.
Do you need a motion, or do you need any other consent? Okay.
That's fine.
So I hear the commission's position is we will not be waiving the fee on this one unless there's further objection. Not waiting. Okay. The rest of the application, we have the two staff comments, which I think will be addressed. On the actual application, I think it fits for the one who's proved before. The applicant's been thoroughly working with the Conservation Commission. On the discussion with the HOAs, I don't really think that has any bearing on the application, and I don't really think we get, I know there's provisions of the towns in there, but we don't really get involved in the workings of an HOA.
Nor should we.
Nor should we. And that's one of the reasons I don't live in one. I don't ever want to live in one. So I think the HOA discussion doesn't really come to bear here.
I don't think it does either. The whole discussion, to me, sounded like a great advertisement for somebody looking for a lawyer. You know, I have no idea what the solution is to that. I really don't know. And I guess I want to note for the record that because the land trust was mentioned, I am on the board of the land trust and have been for quite a few years now.
But again, that issue isn't before us tonight.
I don't, of course, neither was the traversing of open space. Then that's kind of what open space is for. But that's what I thought.
But I think that, the only question I have is, should we, if we're inclined to approve this, should we reference not only the two staff comments, but also the comments that are outlined in the town engineer's notes?
So I made a few comments. Go ahead.
Sorry. So for your reference, under considerations 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, it's how an approval letter would be drafted, and you'll see number 4 references the May 22 memo from me and then the town engineer memo dated May 23.
So if somebody was to suggest something has, all items listed as staff comments and considerations contained in the May 23, 2024 memorandum from Abbey Canyon, Director of Community Development, to the Planning and Commission are hereby incorporated into this permit? Does that capture that? I had gone on to state that all outlines, all items outlined in the May 23, 2024 letter from the town engineer entitled subdivision plan review are to be accepted, but you're stating that would be redundant?
Yes, because that's in number 4 of the considerations.
Yeah.
And actually, so are my staff comments, truthfully.
That's all right. And you could be redundant.
Abby, I would take it the application's not complete because it hasn't been paid for?
Correct. Right, so we...
So our approval would be on condition of completion.
Yeah, and, yeah, if you want to include that, and we just want to, you know, release the milers until the application fee is paid either, which that kind of goes without saying. But if you do want to put that on our picture.
Because normally you wouldn't if you had that.
Yes, bring it. That's a good point.
Approval contingent upon what?
Paving of the rest of the applications.
Any other things you staff said?
No.
Any other commission discussion? We'll entertain a motion then.
I motion, we approve an application seeking a special permit under zoning regulations, Section 8.20, for a 10-lot FRD re-subdivision, Sider Mill Heights, for properties located at 604 Sider Lane, R2A zone. All items listed as staff comments and considerations contained in the May 23, 2024 memorandum from Abbey Canyon, Director of Community Development, to the Planning and Zoning Commission are hereby incorporated into this permit. Approval is contingent upon payment of the full application fee.
Have a motion, a second as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Staff reports.
At the last meeting, there was a question about paving on Route 20. So we did look into that, and the town manager actually attended a reconstruction meeting with DOT, so they are looking to mill June 10 to the 14th and paving the week of June 17 to the 25th. The hours are from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., but I understand they can go to 5:00.
but I understand they can go to 5 p.m. if needed. And these are rough timeframes. It could change depending upon weather. But that's what the plan is as of Thursday, when you went to that meeting.
Thank you for that. They've actually started, they put signs up.
There's signs up, yeah. There's signs about us this week.
All right, that's good. And then my other item to report, 83 Salmonburg Street, is for sale or lease. A sign has been posted on the property that says Little Freshies by Murphys Way. So we will be having a pre-bid meeting June 6th at 9 a.m. on site and proposals are due June, or I'm sorry, July 10th. So we were unsuccessful in finding a broker, so we are looking directly to market it to interested individuals. So I have been maintaining a distribution list, but if anyone knows of anyone who's interested in that property, it is posted on the town website. And that's all I have.
How's the North Granby tractor repair going?
I just sent another follow-up today. I'm arranging a site meeting next week. And did let them know that if there's not progress, we will be looking at either a cease and desist or fines, so.
I drove by today, did you drive by first?
I did, I drove my way to the straight. I did that.
I drive by it every day.
Yeah, I drive, any day I go to town, I do it. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, can, you know, occasionally changes in appearance, but I wouldn't say it ever.
In our zone.
Generator out front now.
Yeah, I saw that, too.
I drove by, just call the wood guy. He looks like he's cleaning up a little.
He is cleaning up, yes.
Thank you.
Better for his business, too.
All right, any other commissioner comments, interest items? Nothing further, I'll turn it to a motion to adjourn. Full move. Have a motion second adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We are adjourned.